Is there any internal seating?
There's going to be a little internal seating, some on the side of the building. And so, the one we saw in Hartford had a pickup window, this will also have a pickup window, so it's Uber or DoorDash or Grubhub, I think Grubhub or DoorDash, pickup window, drive-through, sit and eat indoors or sit and eat outdoors. Don't get the super spicy unless you really like spicy food. It's very good. It's excellent food and they're going to be great tenants there. They're very responsive to the community, I think they'll be great with the community and a great place for people to go and before or after.
Super. Any other questions for Jeremy?
Thank you.
The developers get all the headlines for this, but we know you do a ton of work behind the scenes on this. Please note, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. It's also the six people that sit there on Tuesday nights, your fellow commission members who have put in hard dollars. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you. So, that was really appreciated. My first selectman report is next on the agenda. The weekly COVID positivity rate as of July 5th was 9.09%, which was a sharp drop from the week before of 11.41%. On June 27th, the RTM voted to support the acquisition of Great Island, 60-plus acres along the coastline of Darien. The vote was 67 in favor of the purchase and 13 opposed. Contract was finalized on June 28th and the town now has until October 5th to complete... August. What did I say, October?
October.
Okay. August 5th to complete its due diligence on the property. There have been some questions asked about the special permit application that we filed for the stables. So, Jeremy, could you speak to that for us?
Sure. Good evening. Jeremy Ginsburg, Director of Land News for those watching at home. In Darien, in the R1 zone, which the Steinkrauss property is, the Great Island property, that zone allows permitted principal uses, single-family residents and other uses, but by special permit, the zoning regulations also allow private schools, churches, social, cultural, and recreational uses serving a community need or convenience and not including any activity carried primarily for profit, carried on primarily for profit. So, things like country clubs, Ox Ridge riding, racket club, DCA, those types of uses. And also allowed by special permit are municipal buildings and uses of the town of Darien and other governmental uses intended primarily to serve the needs of the local community, such as the building we're standing in the town hall, or a police station, or a library. So, the town has made application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Monica has sent in a letter requesting a special permit to operate a... to rent the stables and equestrian facilities to an outside operator to allow them to run a full-service show stable with certain parameters. If you think of a small, much smaller riding and racket club, but that's the sense of what we're talking about, either a recreational use under 404D or a municipal building and use of the town of Darien under 404E. Of course, that's with the presumption that the town owns it, so the town is applying as a contract purchaser, which is not an uncommon thing for the Planning and Zoning Commission to see, is someone who's only going to buy the property if they can do a certain thing with it. So, the application includes certain parameters and limits in terms of how many horses, how many riding lessons, summer camp with limited hours and things like that. And that will be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, July 19th. That meeting is in the auditorium of Town Hall. I think it's going to be a live meeting only, so folks want to send in comments or come to the meeting, we'll be in the auditorium. But basically, it's an application for a special permit to allow the town to get some, what I would call, some very basic limited use of the stable. Allow horses to be there, allow people to come in and ride the horses, allow a basic summer camp to run, riding lessons, enough, at least in my opinion, just my opinion, to call it, keep it worthwhile to keep the lights on and the heat running. And it's quite, you've all seen it, you know it's a beautiful building and it would be quite a shame to leave it vacant and let it get rundown. It's been a stable for horses for many, many, many years, I think since it's been built, I would say almost certainly since it's been built, but it never came to the Planning and Zoning Commission to be operated in this manner. I'm sure Mr. Ziegler, when he owned the property, had horses and they were his horses. He didn't have people coming for riding lessons. I am not aware of Mr. Ziegler running a riding camp or a summer camp. So, this would be a first for a special permit. Certainly, people can have, in Darien, you can have horses on your property if you own a certain amount of land, but for you to have people come use the horses, that's a whole different ballgame, which requires the special permit. So, that is why the town is applying and certainly it's up to the Planning and Zoning Commission in terms of what may be granted and that's why we're having a hearing next Tuesday night. Hopefully, that answers the basic questions.
Can I ask a question? You know, someone mentioned to me the idea of maybe having like a therapeutic riding program or something, which frankly, I love the idea, but does the parameters of that permit limit that kind of activity? This is new to me, so I don't understand, I guess, the whole riding world.
You know, I used to actually volunteer at Ox Ridge when Pegasus was there. And so, they had that, so I would think we would be able to do that. That's a great idea.
I mean, there's so many in the area that they're phenomenal, particularly...
I think this would, the way I'm reading this, the proposal, professional rides and lessons would be offered two to five days each week. The operator would offer lessons for ages five and up on school horses and ponies. Lessons are typically private 30-minute sessions, generally by appointment only.
And what's the number of horses that's on there too?
I think there's only 18 stalls.
Okay. So, it's just limited to the number of stalls that are currently...
Yeah. Correct.
Well, but I think we, the permit does suggest a maximum number of people based on 18 horses, two lessons.
Right. And I think that's kind of what we were envisioning is... So, this is not a 24/7 operation. It says here, "The operator would be authorized to operate between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Minimum of 15 minutes between activities to alleviate traffic problem, possible traffic congestion. No more than 18 horses will be boarded and not more than 36 individuals plus onsite staff will be present at any one time." So, that's kind of the concept, is quite limited. And again, I can't speak for anyone, I can speak for myself. One would envision this as kind of a, I'll use the word placeholder, because as you know, what's... There are no plans, we tell people all the time, for Great Island at this time. That is to be determined.
And being transparent, I think we need to let the public know that under no circumstances have we, as the Board of Selectmen, negotiated any sort of lease or extended contract to this, to this horse farm. This is just giving us the option to be able to do it in the circumstances that that's what this commission or whatever gets set up can choose to do that.
Correct. I kind of foresee, and again, just me, as you know, the town runs through Parks and Recreation, runs numerous programs in this community. Right out there is usually about 5 o'clock, soccer for five-year-olds. And Park and Rec runs the program, they hire the coaches and they run the program. Alicia runs her youth camp. She hires the counselors and she runs a youth camp every summer and has been for many years. So, I would foresee something like that. Park and Rec potentially being the person who hires this outside person, group, company to operate the stable with these parameters. Go out to bed or whatever the town does, but certainly it's not something that, you don't see Pam Gary running the soccer camp or running Little League or with teaching lessons. She contracts that out to other people.
Now, in this, in the case that the town decides, oh, we don't want to use that as a stable anymore, in three years, could the town go back to planning and zoning and have it rezoned for another use?
Certainly, that would be the potential for the entire of Great Island. We, I think, as part of this, we put in a limited three-year request.
Good.
Because we didn't expect that the Board of Selectmen would want a long-term commitment as you wouldn't want to hamstring whatever committee you set up and say, oh, you can figure out whatever you want to do with the property, except you're stuck with this for tenure. No. So, it's giving the town the ability to, again, keep everything running, keep the lights on, keep the heat on, keep the air conditioning on for the time being till final decisions are made, very short term. And then, it's going to be up to whatever committee the Board of Selectmen appoints to determine what uses go forward for the Great Island property, again, with the presumption that the sale goes through. And then, there'll be a series of permits and approvals and requests that may need to be made to various town agencies. And who knows what that is?
There's definitely concern about the safety of horses being around and public being around and what they have use of. So, I know that a lot of people were concerned with that permit being there without having an idea of what's going to happen with the rest of the space.
I think that would certainly be as kind of what Monica's discussed, for the time being, it's difficult to have, allow full public access with nine different renters on the property. It would be very awkward for people just to walk in and, hey, hey, you're sitting having a cup of coffee outside. And I think similarly, as part of any consideration going forward, if the town were to keep the stable use or the horse use, what fenced-in areas, kind of like what Ox Ridge has, would the town want to set up and say, okay, here's the fenced-in area for horses? And there's other things that need to be considered. As you know, Highland Farm, there were many conditions with respect to the horses, what the town could not do with that property to be sensitive to the existence of horses. So, that will have to be considered going forward.
Thank you.
And as the contract owner, we now currently have standing to make this application because obviously, we still have our due diligence period, but under the regs, we're permitted to make this, we have standing to make this application.
That's correct. The owners, Wayne Fox was nice enough to get an authorization from the owners to allow Monica to apply. And so, we are here, as you've acknowledged, if the town decides for whatever reason not to buy it, you would no longer have that, but we'll see.
And we withdrew our protected landmark.
Right. Without getting too bogged down in details, part of the original application was what we call in, under the regulations, a protected town landmark designation for the stable building because it was designed by this famous architect who did other famous buildings throughout the world, including Grand Central Terminal. And I believed, just speaking for me, that that gave it a little more gravitas in terms of the importance of keeping the building. Since then, that aspect of the application has been withdrawn after some concern by the existing property owners who said, you know, we've given you this letter of authorization to proceed with the special permit, we're not so sure at this point, we want you to designate our building and give it this elevated status. So, we said, agreed, fair enough, we will withdraw that aspect of the request, but we're still going for the special permit for the stable, which they said would be fine. But we felt that designating it would give it a little more importance. It was not essential to have that approval as part of, to continue to run the stable.
Is it something that we can go back in, in three years, when this is over?
I would say, if the town ends up purchasing it between now and August, whatever, you could apply for it at any time.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, next, I have, At Home in Darien has a new executive director, Chris Jones. I had the pleasure of meeting Chris and I look forward to working with him in his new role, supporting seniors in town. I hope that everyone enjoyed the long weekend. I can attest to the fact that there were many enthusiastic participants in the annual push and pull parade, including your Board of Selectmen. I think we all had a good time there, right? Yeah?
It was great.
Okay.
I might add, what's not to like?
I know.
It's the lemonade stand.
Yeah. That was right. For you young people out there, a lemonade stand along the parade route, a very, very good idea. So, it took place on July 4th and the route was from Darien High School to Post 53 where food trucks and children's games greeted the riders. Thank you to Darien's VFW Post 6933 and in particular, Sherard Sammy for organizing this event. I'd like to recognize the Chamber of Commerce and all the sponsors who contribute to Darien's annual sidewalk sales. The sales will take place Thursday, July 14th through Saturday, July 16th, from 10:00 to 5:00, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There are a number of fun activities planned, as well as opportunities to win prizes and the Chamber website has more details. In collaboration with the town of Darien, Newport Healthcare is offering a grief and loss support group for local parents and families at no charge. On three Wednesdays in July, you can attend either live or attend by Zoom. Registration is not required and you can attend all three sessions or however many that you would like. You can find more information on this on our homepage on the town website. Yesterday, Marcy and I attended the five-mile run for Ukraine that started at Pear Tree Point Beach. I did not run, but Marcy participated and they had planned on 200 people, they had over 300 participants and it was, it was just a really, really beautiful day. The fireworks for Darien are scheduled to take place at Darien High School on Friday. The rain date is July, the rain date is Saturday, July 16th. Parking passes have sold out, but walk-ins are always welcome. And you can find additional information about the fireworks on the Park and Rec page of the town website. And again, I want to thank all of the generous sponsors for this event. So, that's what I have. Kate?
Our new HR Director, Susan Barstail, started last week. It's terrific to have her here. The consultants doing the emergency services study will be in town August, if I get it right, 9th and 10th or 10th and 11th. The audit, the annual audit is underway and I will have an update on the ARPA funds for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Liaisons. I think, Mike, you said that Blight, your next one, right?
Blight, yeah, Blight meets on Wednesday, so I'll report next time.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, for the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, the next meeting is this Thursday at 6:00 PM in this room and we'll be discussing a preliminary conceptual design by our architect, KGND. And things are moving. It's, you know, we're past the state submission, so now we're into the design process and stakeholders are being, you know, having discussions about what works best for the buildings and the principals are involved and so, so it is exciting and this week we hope to take action on the designs.
So, what, how do you communicate with the public on this?
So, that's a great question and we plan on putting together some communications going forward. We hadn't done a ton because we did not have the submissions up to the state. We didn't, we'd been letting people know kind of the general things that we've been doing, but now that KGND and ONG has been selected as the contractual firm, I think we have been putting together, working with a couple of the other members and we're going to put together some, but we'd love to put something into the newsletter that Marley does or on the website. We're talking about the best way to use that page that we have on the town website for the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee. But we also need to push information out and we're going to be using during the school year, the principals, because they have the full list of all the parents involved, but we will need to get it out to the community, so.
So, will the, what will you do over the summer? And I know you have school reps in your orbit, how will you, how will they communicate with their...
So, right now, the principals are going to be the best.
The best people.
Because they have those parent lists and we just don't have access to that information. So, they'll be able to push information out. No work is really going to be beginning until a minimum, probably June of next year.
Okay.
So, in the next six to nine months, it's really going to be, here's what's coming, coming down the pike, but there should be no physical changes to those buildings for the next minimum nine months. So, people won't be impacted. So, they're, we can, we're going to put out information and tell people that they have plenty of time, they don't need to worry about, you know, whether their school year be affected and it won't be for quite a bit, so.
And you're going to stick with weekly meetings?
No, we're going to move to twice a month.
You want to, okay.
We have been meeting weekly. This month, it's three out of the four weeks, but we're going to be moving to a, twice a month, most likely one virtual, one in-person and with the option to do both in-person or both virtual, me too.
Okay. Thank you.
IT Committee has been slugged and that's my fault, but I will report on the next meeting.
Ox Ridge Building Committee meets on Wednesday, so I will have an update on that. Mental Health Task Force broke into a smaller group and met on, last week on Thursday. The goal of that smaller group is to create the post-vention plan, which is a post-vention suicide plan. The people that are meeting in that group are people that are going to be hands-on if a suicide happens again in town. So, it's first responders, mental health advocates, Board of Selectmen liaison, Ally from town. So, we're working on, we did a little bit of training on Wednesday, on last Thursday, then we're meeting again next week and we're going to actually write this plan. So, that will be an intricate part of implementing that program. The larger group will be meeting at the end of the month to kind of go over where we are and what some of the new programs are that we've been implementing in town. So, it's busy and all good work that I think is going to be really beneficial to the town.
Marcy, can you speak to who's helping with the post-vention?
So, the post-vention, we have a liaison from the police department. So, Chief Anderson is there, we have Ally, we have myself, and then we have a representative for Child's Guidance, a representative for Center for Hope, we have a representative from Task Force that are in that smaller group. The larger liaison consists of some clergy in town, a couple of more of the officers,
kids in crisis.
School liaisons, right, there's another school liaison that's there from Darien High School. At this last meeting, Principal Darien High School came, she is part of this task force training. So, pretty good group of a lot of people, they're very much hands-on to anybody who is affected by the suicides that have happened in the last six months.
Thank you.
Sure. Nope.
Okay, public comment, are there any... Hello, Ralph?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Ralph Hogan. I reside at Nine Archer Lane here in Darien. And I'm a RTM member of District 4, Public Works Committee Chair. Thank you for allowing public comment this evening. Any of the following comments are my own and in no way reflect any consensus or statement on the part of the RTM or the RTM Public Works Committee. I'm here to express two concerns regarding the Great Island purchase. First, the Darien Police Commission met on June 30th and a statement by Commissioner and Chair of the Legal Traffic Authority, Kim Hufford, was read aloud. "If and when the town closes on the purchase of the Great Island, traffic impacts and management will weigh significantly on any proposed public use of the property. We don't weigh in on a vote until an actual proposal is in front of us." She then read from a statement by Police Chief Anderson. "Should the town acquire Great Island from both the overreaching public safety and legal traffic authority perspectives, proper planning, engineering, and traffic management concerns must be at the absolute forefront of any prospective considerations. The public roadways in this area predate internal combustion, as do the roads on Great Island itself. The area is very well-traveled by bicycles and pedestrians, in addition to automobiles on most days throughout the year. The simple truth is that significantly enhancing any of the public roads in the immediate area from a state safety standpoint is virtually impossible based on land ownership rights in the geometric topographic features on the existing roadway system. There is but one way in and out of the Great Island, there are but two ways in and out of the area on the approach or departure to and from the Great Island." Close quote. "Depending on the defined use of the island, I believe the chief is raising doubt as to whether the existing roadways can meet state road safety requirements and whether it is even feasible to adjust the roads to meet state safety requirements. Town needs to define the use of the property so the LTA can render an evaluation. We cannot go blindly into the acquisition without knowing the viability of the roads that lead to and from the island, particularly as it relates to Goodwives River Road and Ringzen Road vis a vis state safety requirements. I submit that as part of the due diligence process and before closing on the sale of the Great Island, the Board of Selectmen needs to be sure of the road integrity." So, I just want to be sure that if we close on this property, that we don't come to some realization six months from now with the LTA weighing in on it, that we really don't have adequate roads. Or the roadways are adequate, adequate, but only to a certain amount or certain level of activity, which I think is also a possibility. I don't know, I'm not a traffic expert, okay? But it was something clearly stated by them and they're waiting to hear from the Board of Selectmen as to what is the specific use of the island so they can render an evaluation. And so, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. The second thing I want to speak about is the stables. But what I have to say might be dated information or dated material with Jeremy Ginsburg's presentation, but I'll still go through it regardless. Second, leading up to the RTM vote of June 27th, during numerous district meetings, public presentations, and committee meetings, people speculated on how the property could be used but were advised that speculation on use would be subject to later discussion conducted in transparent, open public forum, approached as a blank canvas, something that will be painted on by all of our townspeople. I think that was generally the message that was given out prior to the RTM vote on June 27th. When I came to the June 27th RTM meeting, I had no idea which way I was going to vote. My hesitancy was because there was no defined use for the item and essentially, I voted on a leap of faith that the Board of Selectmen would shepherd this acquisition with the publicly announced terms vis a vis open forum, transparent discussion to formulate an agreed-upon island use definition. Fast forward to Thursday, July 7th, page 13 of the Darien Times Legal Notices, posted by the town of Darien, Protected Landmark Number 11, Special Permit Application, Town of Darien, Great Island. Now, this notice, you know, did mention the aspects of what Jeremy was saying about the use of the stables, certainly, but it also was very specific to say that this would be establishing numerous assets on the island as landmark preservation. And once that, should that occur, and he's saying now that this has been withdrawn, but should that occur, all those various assets that are listed in this application, which I have to say are numerous, it's not just the stables, it's the riding rink that was put behind the stables, okay? It's the paddocks, it's the polo fields, it's the pathways for the horses, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, there was a lot of assets that were in this application to be designated as landmark designation. And once that occurs, that renders all of that as basically untouchable. And therefore, the, any other development of the island would be without consideration to what those assets would normally have if they were not put into a landmark status. And so, I'm looking back at the process of an open discussion and participation on the development of the island, the defined use of the island, and so I want to see us get back to that. And I'm hopeful that if this application is being adjusted to where there is no landmark status, that we will be able to do that. So, I'm getting a little off here because of the recent change that Jeremy announced. Okay, so, yeah, isolating these assets under the guise... so, yeah, isolating these assets under the guise of landmark status protection takes these assets out of any land use discussion and renders those assets untouchable under landmark protection. This is not what I signed up for when I voted on June 27th. As far as I'm concerned, and again, this was assuming that it was going to be a landmark status application, uh, the application should be withdrawn immediately and reevaluated, re-evaluated after a land use definition for the Great Island is negotiated and agreed and adopted by the Darien townspeople. In conclusion, it is clear the Great Island land use definition is paramount to a clear path of acquisition and development of the island, and yet there is nothing in tonight's agenda to start a committee, or a trust, or a conservancy, or a commission to address this pivotal question. May I suggest the board consider doing so as soon as possible?
Thank you for your comments, Ralph.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak? Joe? No? You're just here visiting? Okay. Kate, do we have any email comments?
I had not received any.
Okay. So, next item on the business, uh, on the agenda is new business, discuss and take action on a request to update authorized signer for neglected cemetery account grant. Kate's gonna cover it.
We did this, a couple of these, when you, um, you all first got on the board. Um, this is the same kind of thing. We passed this resolution, um, actually think it might be as far as two years ago, but we passed it when Jamie Stevenson was first selectman, and the resolution actually named her, it said first selectman Jamie Stevenson. So the state will not accept Monica now signing for the grant. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to repass the, um, resolution, not naming names, just stating that the first selectman is authorized, to make it an evergreen approval.
Okay. Any questions on this? Comments? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the request to name me as first selectman?
No, we're not naming you, just naming the first selectman.
To name, as first selectman, the authorized signer for the neglected cemetery account grant. Uh, Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on the request to approve the 43rd Darien Road Race. Um, this race has been taking place for over forty years. We know that it's a community, uh, a fundraiser for the Community Fund of Darien. And, um, are there any questions or discussion?
What does our approval entail? The budget, participation, kind of?
Um, allow, we're allowing them to use the roads.
And they already have?
They already have everybody else's, that should have been included in the pack.
They have police approval, right?
They have police approval and parks and rec.
And Kate, do we know, um, is this the number of volunteers? Is this a typical number?
I didn't look at the application. I don't know. But I, I, I wouldn't even know if that was a typical number.
Okay. Okay. Um, and are there any other comments, discussion? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the request to approve the 43rd Darien Road Race? Marcy moves, second. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to approve a resolution, resolution authorizing a power purchase agreement with the Connecticut Green Bank. And we had a number of questions about this, um, and we did not get all of them answered.
Um, no, there was, there was one question that, um, regarding why we're required to provide workers' comp insurance. I can tell you why we require them to. Um, because, you know, if one of their workers gets hurt, we don't want it to come onto our workers' comp. But why they require us to provide it, they haven't given us an answer on that yet. Um.
My, my question is why, if, this seems like a different, um, approach to this. And I'm, I'm.
Different from?
I'm, I'm wondering why, if it's between the school and the, um, the school is the seller, right? Or the buyer, right?
The school is the buyer, so, right, the, the panels will be located on the schools that will, um, basically, under this agreement, that gives them the right to purchase electricity at a lower rate.
Right. I guess I'm wondering why.
Why we're involved.
Why, yes, I understand we own the property, but I'm not con, I'm not confident.
Well, I think if we're the, if we're the property owner, then we're always in the line to be sued. So you have these agreements, and they relate to insurance and indemnity running from the various parties, which was another one of my questions, was that, in essence, this is going to be a construction project for a period of time where they're going to build those panels. Then those panels are going to provide electricity, they're gonna be bought, and, you know, that commodity's gonna be bought. There are ongoing maintenance responsibilities for the seller to maintain that equipment that's on our property. When I read the indemnity agreements, they said, well, we're giving indemnity for each other, but, but it didn't really make sense to me because if they're putting that equipment on, we should be indemnified if there's an accident there. But I can't understand, and Wayne may be able to help out here, what we're indemnifying them for. It's their equipment, they're putting it on.
Right, right.
That's going to be their workers or their subcontractors on those roofs doing that equipment. Why in the world would we be indemnifying them for anything? Why in the world would they be additional insurers on our insurance policies, which would just give them absolute right to make a claim against our companies from, because of anything that happens there? So I, and it might be something simple I could very well just be missing, and, you know, Wayne, if you could speak to that, or, or if you're not ready to tonight at, at some point. But that's what struck me when I was reading through those agreements.
Good evening, Mr. Director. My name is Wayne Fox, commentary for Darien. I, I think the question's a fair one. I had occasion to, uh, raise that type of issue with Matt Renelli, with Goodman, Shipman and Goodman, who represents the Board of Education. Uh, I think that relates to the underlying question of, with the Board of Education having the care, custody, control of that property, although we own, your point is, is a fair one, why are they not the party signing the contract? I know why we would have potential liability. For the normal course of events, I would expect that they would have the obligations called for and provided for under, under the contract. I'm gonna get answers to those questions. I'm, I'm suggesting to the first selectman that for this evening, we put it off for a short period of time.
Okay. Yeah, and I, just, and again, I, I don't, even whether it's a school or us, I don't understand why we would be indemnifying the entities that are putting the equipment on our property. If they're putting it up there, and they're responsible for the maintenance of that, if they're going to be going up on those roofs, not only to put them up, but then to check to make sure, and I, I understand we have to make sure that the trees are cut so there's sun to get in, and I read that part of the agreement. But I don't understand what we're potentially indemnifying the seller for. That would be my specific.
Fair question. In my experience, I don't like my client to have an obligation to identify anyone.
Yes.
And I will check that out with Mr. Marinelli.
Thank you.
Does any, does anyone else have any questions on this?
Two questions. Um, is this similar to ones that we have signed before? I mean, we've other properties that we've been talking about doing this, but is this similar to anything else, or no?
I'd have to pull up, the concept is similar, I'd have to pull up the, the contracts that we signed for.
For up here.
For up here.
And then do we know what the annual maintenance costs are? If we are responsible, if this is gonna go on the Darien Public Schools budget, what do we?
Well, no, that's, they're responsible for the maintenance.
No. Buyer shall at sole cost and expense maintain the site in good condition and repair.
I believe the, not the equipment, but the site. I think what they're referring to is the roofs, we've gotta maintain where they're located.
Oh, 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 okay. That was the piece that I was, okay.
But I will ask if, if the Board of Ed thinks that there is any cost to that.
Okay. Cause I think the roof projects will be done beforehand.
Okay, so you know what? We will, um.
Would you like a motion to just table to your August, August, I'm suggesting August 8th, simply because I don't know if we'll get the answers back by your July 26th meeting.
Right. And it's, it, would that be a problem for the school, do you think?
I have no idea.
I don't think so, but let me see how quickly I can get those answers, Kate, so you may be able to run the 28th.
Okay, so I'll, you know what? We'll say to the July 26th meeting.
26th is fine.
And if you can't, if we don't have the answers, you can table it again.
Okay. May I have a motion? Marcy? Mike seconds. All in favor? Okay, motion is, um, tabled till July, what did you say, Kate?
26.
26. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne, for being here for that. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda was to discuss and take action, uh, to set a date and time for the referendum, and because there was no referendum, we will, um, are there any comments on this? Otherwise, we will move on. Okay. Old business is to discuss and take action on the proposed vision, mission, and community value statement. We had a lot of, um, great comments and additions and some just wording changes, and I would like to open it up to discussion and see if anybody wants to make any other changes at this time.
Just a little bit of, a little bit of wordsmithing.
Okay.
Um, so if we look at the vision statement, I'll read it aloud. "The Town of Darien seeks to grow in a thoughtful manner, protecting the natural and historic resources of the town, as we provide opportunities and services that benefit all of our residents." The word "grow" really stuck out to me, as we kind of talked about the ninety-seven percent developed. And when I think of growth, I think of population growth, I think of growth within, you know, building structures. I, I would like to change it to a word like innovate, because we're talking about becoming a more advanced society, not necessarily a larger society.
Innovate, or, uh, as you were saying that, and I agree, innovate or evolve?
Yep.
But either, yeah.
Okay. To that point, I think one of the things that I mentioned in the last meeting was the word, I think, historic resources. I think that could apply to anything. It could apply to a culture, it could apply to a building, it could apply to a bridge. And I guess I wanna understand why we're, you know, the, a vision statement is looking forward to the future, not.
But I think in the future, you still have to, you have to consider protecting the history of the community. So, you know, and I'm talking, you know, things like physical structures, um, you know, the Mather Homestead, the stables, um, Rings End Road Bridge, you know, things that are, we don't want growth to take those away.
No, but I don't know, I mean, look, to, to Marcy's point, we're at ninety-seven per, ninety-eight percent developed. I, I don't know that including that in the vision statement is gonna prevent that from happening. I don't see.
Also not prevent anything from happening.
Right, right. So I guess my point is, but we need to, I guess, you know, what does historic resources mean? Well, that could apply to anything. Um.
I guess I looked at it like Kate, I looked at it as, um, historic buildings that, or sites.
Could you put historic character?
Or change, I wouldn't use character, but maybe natural resources and his, find another word that goes with historic.
Landmarks?
Landmarks?
Yeah. I, I would go with landmarks. I think we do have some very notable, like the Rings End Bridge, very notable, iconic landmarks in town. Tilly Pont Harrock.
So protecting the landmarks and natural resources of the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So landmarks and natural resources. Okay.
Right.
And the word.
Are we doing, yeah, are we doing innovate?
I like innovate or evolve. I like either.
I like innovative. Innovate, innovative.
Innovate is the word that I had there.
Let's do innovate.
Innovate.
Good one.
Oh, yeah.
So historic landmarks, natural resources, seeks to grow, seeks to innovate.
The town seeks, Town Darien seeks to innovate in a thoughtful manner, protecting the landmarks and natural resources of the town, as we provide opportunities and services that benefit all of our residents.
Beautiful. Okay. Everyone is, okay, supportive? All right. Uh, "The Town of Darien strives to continually provide high-quality, high-value services to its residents, taxpayers, and visitors."
From the beginning, that has always been, I think, unanimously agreed on, so.
Any changes?
No.
Okay. "Darien's sense of community is rooted in residents who respect one another, who welcome diversity in all facets of life, and who are engaged in our larger society. We value equity, inclusion, and dignity for all. We insist on a culture of respect and recognize that words and actions matter. The Board of Selectmen seeks to continuously improve programs and services that are accessible to all, as well as environmentally and fiscally sustainable. The Board of Selectmen is committed to ensuring that the town is a safe and healthy place to live, work, and raise a family." Marcy?
Just wordsmithing again. Um, I'd like to drop the word "who."
Where.
It says, "Darien's sense of community is rooted in residents who engage."
Who welcome?
Who. Yep. Get rid of who welcome, just say, "rooted in residents who respect one another, welcome diversity in all facets, facets of life, and are engaged in a larger site." I think it's just a lot of who's.
Sure.
And who bill.
Who's on first?
And the next thing is, "We value equity, inclusion, and dignity for all's." I would, wanna talk about the word equity, but I would, instead of doing inclusion, do inclusivity. Just so that I stick with the Y. And I did a little, because this equity word is always kind of a, people don't really, really use equality, equity, um, I did a little bit of research to find out exactly what it means in terms of Webster Dictionary. And there were three other words that came up in mind that I think, I think nailed that topic a little cleaner than, um, the equity word, which would be either fairness, justice, or integrity, which I think really described what the word equity means. We're talking about justice, we're talking about fairness, and we're talking about integrity. So if any of those words seem to fit that sentence.
Say, say those words again.
Fairness, justice, and integrity.
Well, I think, yeah, I think equity is the right word. I, I mean, you know, fairness, I, I, I think it's just the, I think it's just the better, uh, word. I think it's the more comprehensive word. And, uh, and I think we say we value it, but it's not that we insist upon it. We, you know, we insist upon, uh, justice. You know, we, we're, this is a value, uh, statement, and that's a, that's a value, uh, word. And, um, I, I just think that's the right word.
Okay. I would agree. I think we do things like, we look at having accessible playgrounds in town, we look at providing, you know, equitable access. I, I don't know that equity is a bad word, and I don't know that, I mean, fairness is not a bad word, I just don't know that it's the.
I just think it's important that we, as the Board of Selectmen, understand when we write this, what we mean by that word. And if we are meaning fairness and justice and integrity, then I can stick with it. But I wanna make that very clear when we put this out, that that's exactly what I mean. I mean fairness, integrity, and justice.
I think there's some power in the words that you brought up. I hadn't thought about it. Uh, one of the problems you have with equity is that it's a, uh, kind of a polarized word somehow, means something, at least in the public sphere, uh, that goes beyond what it meant five or ten years ago.
Correctly.
Whereas fairness is timeless, right? I mean, fairness is something that you associate or want to associate with any kind of government or community or societal system. And so I think for us to come out and use the word fairness, uh, in a way seems more powerful and unique than just using merely equity, even though it just says, we quote, "value equity." Equity implies an outcome, as we're. Equity implies an outcome, whereas fairness implies a behavior.
A process.
And a process. And so we get back to some things we talked about in terms of the values and how we want people to treat each other. The word fairness kind of links up to that concept, I think, a little bit more than, say, equity, which feels more kind of outcome-driven, like, we're, we're going to do something, and we're going to expect a particular outcome. So I think in that sense, I, I agree, I would, I would replace equity with fairness for that.
I think that's why, I agree with you, and I think that's why I also agree with Mike, that, that the equity and the justice are, are more, I don't know, they're, they're stiffer, and justice is something that you don't value. It's something that you, you.
Expected by statute.
Yeah, you, you expect. Whereas, I like fairness or integrity. I like them both.
Why not have them? Why not have them?
Okay, I, I.
I mean, you don't have to replace one word with one word.
Okay.
And I just don't know if you'd have integrity for all, so we value.
Okay.
Fairness.
And justice. Fairness, we value fairness, justice, inclusivity.
I don't like justice.
I like, if we're going to, I'm sorry, if we're going to add fairness, that's fine, but I, you know, frankly, I, for me, you know, equity needs to be in there, and equity doesn't mean equality.
No.
Right.
Equity means a fair result. When you do equity, it's a fair result, not an equal result. What's, for what's equity for one in one circumstance isn't equity in another, but it's, I, I honestly, I can't, I mean, I can't vote for the, the draft without the word equity. And if you want to put fairness in it, that's fine, but I, I can't, I can't, I can't pin it out. I mean, we can pass it, and that's fine, but I, I can't vote.
I mean, I could, I could support the word equity. I could support it. It is, it is a word that I, but I, I want to be clear that that's what our, our meaning is. That's what our definition is of the word. It is, it is not equal.
Right.
It is fair.
Equity, by definition, is not equal. Equity is fairness. It's not.
But there's, there's a little cartoon that I've seen.
Yes.
That describes, you know, okay, like, here's what, it's got three kids, you know, little one, big one, little one, and it talks about equal. They all get a box to stand on, and they're all getting this box to stand on, but they can't all see over the fence because of their heights.
Right.
Equity is they get different-sized boxes, so that they can all see over the fence.
Yeah.
And I think that's what you're, and I think that's what we're understanding. Equity means, it does mean fairness, you know, but you're all getting to the same end result.
I think, to me, the, the fairness was the word equity, but I do, we look at equitable access to our perks. I, I don't know. I, I like the word equity. I don't think it means anything other than fairness and.
It certainly doesn't mean equal. It means.
No. I guess, but what I'm hearing is equity means fairness, and fairness, so, so why don't we just go with fairness?
I think the feeling is equity might be a strong word.
I think it is.
Okay. Do we want both?
You could do both, yeah.
We value equity, fairness, inclusivity, and dignity for all.
Does that work for you, Marcy?
Yep, that's fine.
That's fine.
You got that, Kate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And anything else, Marcy?
No. Anything else, anybody?
Okay. All right. So, Kate, can we approve this with the changes made?
Yep.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve our amended vision, mission, and community value statement as presented?
Would you like to read them, as we've amended them?
Okay. Okay, so the, the vision statement is, "The town of Darien seeks to innovate in a thoughtful manner, protecting the landmarks and natural resources of the town, as we provide opportunities and services that benefit all of our residents."
Wait, wait. Then you forgot natural.
Landmarks and natural resources.
You said protecting the natural.
No.
I have.
Protecting the landmarks and natural resources.
Okay.
Change the order.
Okay, okay, sorry. Okay.
The mission statement is, "The town of Darien strives to continually provide high-quality, high-value services to its residents, taxpayers, and visitors." And then the value statement, "Darien's sense of community is rooted in residents who respect one another, welcome diversity in all facets of life, and are engaged in our larger, larger society. We value equity, fairness, inclusivity, and dignity for all. We insist on a culture of respect and recognize that words and actions matter. The Board of Selectmen seeks to continuously improve programs and services that are accessible to all, as well as environmentally and fiscally sustainable. The Board of Selectmen is committed to ensuring that the town is a safe and healthy place to live, work, and raise a family."
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve? Marcy moves. Mike seconds, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Nice work, everybody.
There we go. Next item on the agenda is transfer, discuss and take action on a request to transfer $27,000 for the demolition of 27 Crimmins Road, and we have, Mark, are you going to cover this? Okay, we have Mark McEwen.
Good evening, everybody. So, between the time we met and discussed the purchase, back when virtual meetings were the thing, we received bids, or quotes, I should say, for the demolition, which provided us budget figures, and at the time, we were in the area of $30,000 to demolition the structures on the site. Since that time, we bid the project twice. The first bid only had two bidders, and it was almost triple the $30,000, and then we rebid it with a little tweak, if you will. We supplied some of the materials necessary to bring the site back to pre-built state, which means before the buildings were there, and the bids went down just a little bit, and so we're almost double the $30,000 budget, so that's what the money's for. Most of what I've heard from the contractors is that the cost of inflation and fuel prices has driven that number.
And, Mark, we're under a time limit, correct?
So, the, the most crucial thing is that we purchased the property and closed on April 29th, and for our grant award, we were given 90 days to have the building leveled and on the ground. It doesn't have to be a completed project at that point, but it had to be demolished, and that deadline's July 29th.
Can we actually, if we were to vote yes on this tonight, can that be completed by July 29th?
So, I've been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work. In order to do that, we've disconnected the utilities. We're hoping to take the money we already had and put it towards demolition of part of the structures on the property, which is the detached garage, and also do the abatement work that was necessary, the very little bit was necessary, but it, it has to get done before we'll issue a demo permit. Our biggest problem right now is that there's a 10-day waiting period, once you remove asbestos, and you have to notify the state. So, we pass it tonight, and we go tomorrow night. We will be right at the 24th hour getting it done, but I, I've been committed to finishing the project, so I feel like we still can get it done.
Thank you for your work on it.
It's going to be challenging, though, and I've asked for an extension from FEMA because of the problems we've run into.
Thank you for your work on this.
Mark, you, I remember they asked for that insurance when this whole process started.
Right.
They have firmly received that, right?
No, so the insurance, flood insurance offers a 30, up to a $30,000 acquisition and demolition project, but it's a reimbursement, and they've committed to that. I spoke to the gentleman two weeks ago, and the prior owners have already signed off on that money, so it would go to us.
Directly to us?
Directly to us. And that was the only way that it would happen anyways, but they, they did what they needed to do to, to make it happen. So that is money that's not in our budget, never was in our budget, and, in essence, we'll reimburse for the added costs, but we knew it was a possibility.
Right.
And we discussed that all along.
Right.
But yes, that's, that's available, according to the gentleman that was running it for them.
And then on timing, you, you need to demo it, but you don't need to remove everything, right?
I was told by the state of Connecticut, as long as it's on the ground, meaning just a heap of pileless debris, they would be happy with that. But I'm committed to helping the residents that live on the street. They've been dealing with that for over a year, and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's a frequent reminder to a lot of people that what we've gone through and what they've gone through. So, I'm committed to try and get the project finished. I just know I won't be able to have the grass seed and all that stuff done. It's just not.
That's what I'm making sure the community understands, is that we're not going to just leave the pile.
No. So, the, the requirement by FEMA's grant is to remove the structures, remove all the impervious surfaces, me and the asphalt driveway, the sidewalks, things like that, and then level it, and I don't mean level, it's a flat, but level the property to make it look like it was natural.
Right.
And, and return it to its natural state, so to speak.
Okay.
There is fencing on the property, and I, I've never really understood whose fence it was, whether it was a neighbor's fence or now the town's fence, but it, the more times I've been to the site, it looks like it's probably the town's fence, but that, to me, is probably an easy repair to get rid of at some point in the future, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark?
Just assuming that now the 75% reimbursement is going to go towards the almost $60,000 demo versus the original?
No.
No.
This is extra.
This is extra?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
And, and unfortunately, in the FEMA grant and the contract award, the writing on the document is very specific that we agreed to those terms, and anything that was added on at the end would be the burden of the town.
Oh, darn.
Like anything.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the transfer of $27,000 for the demolition of 27 Crimmins Road? Mike moves. Marcy seconds, all in favor? Great. Okay. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for coming in to tell us about that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is minutes. Review and approve the minutes of June 13th, the special meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, corrections, any changes? May I have a motion to approve? Mike moves. It's Marcy seconds. Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Next item is re, review and approve the minutes of the June 20th regular meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, corrections?
No, I look good.
Seeing none? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the June 20th regular meeting minutes? Mike moves. Sarah second, so all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, agenda review. Are there any topics Board members would like to see in the future on the agenda?
I'd like to start.
Okay.
Just, can we get an update on what's going on with some of the flooding studies that they've been doing?
Sure.
As we get into August, the one-year mark?
Yeah. Some of that will actually be included with the ARPA update.
Okay.
Right. There's money set aside in ARPA to do work from whatever the studies produce. So, may I have a motion to adjourn? Sarah moves. Mike second, so all in favor? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you, 79.